Welcome to the September 5th County Commission Meeting. If you'd stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning, and thank you for your audio and visual participation. We would like to remind people to silence their cellphones and meeting documents are next to Commissioner Bender for review, and if you need a listening device, Craig can help you in the front row. With that, we'll go into routine business. Item one is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Motion on a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the commission minutes from August 29th.
So moved.
Second?
Have a motion on a second. Any corrections or changes? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Item three are bills to be paid of $180,111.16.
Pay the bills.
Second?
A motion on a second. Any comments? Commissioner Barth?
It's great to see the bills this small for a week, but today's bills include $60,000 for LSS from JDI expenses, $27,000 for jail food, which actually takes us down below $100,000 for other bills.
Wow. Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments? We have a motion on a second to approve the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item four, there are no reports this morning. Personnel action. Item A is to consider a motion to approve routine personnel.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion on a second. All those in favor of approving routine personnel action say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have the following significant anniversaries for you today. Sarah Sakman and the Public Defender's Office, Deborah Artis at the 24/7 Program, and Toni Andrus, Daniel Bertschlof, and Glenn Kruger at the jail, all celebrating five years of service. Julie Winger at the Auditor's Office, and Randy Dobberpool at Safe Home, and Rebecca Bradfelt at Human Services, all celebrating 10 years of service. Orlando Nelson at the jail, and Derek Kukinruther at the Sheriff's Office, celebrating 15 years of service, and Greg Gaffney in facility, celebrating 20 years of service. I don't believe we have any of them with us today, but our appreciation for their service definitely goes out to them.
But he's working hard this morning.
Apparently.
Thank you. Yep, thank you for all that service. Item C is to record the volunteers in the county department for August.
We have 270 volunteers throughout nine areas of county for August.
Awesome. Do we have any idea how many hours that is this month?
Not by month, but over the course of the year, you probably remember from the volunteer proclamation every spring that it's thousands of hours of service each year from them.
Awesome.
Incredible.
Incredible. Item D is a special commission action to create immediate recruitment for two pre-trial coordinator positions under pre-trial services at pay grade 12.
You might recall from the budget hearings this year that you talked a lot about the pre-trial services area and the pre-trial positions. This year's budget actually includes $300,000 to support the beginning of that program. Erin Serska is here today to answer any questions that you might have, but we took a look at the two position descriptions that she's prepared, and based on the description of those responsibilities, we're recommending classification of that position at a pay grade 12, which is dead on with what we were hoping for during the budget process or expecting. And Erin's here, if you have any additional questions.
Sure. Erin, do you have any comments?
Good morning, Erin Serska, Minnehaha County Commission Office, and we're here to start and ask for approval for immediate recruitment for two pre-trial staff, which would execute the function of completing the pre-trial risk assessment from the Arnold Foundation, the PSA, and conduct other case, pre-trial case processing functions to support the implementation of that tool, and I would take any questions you guys may have.
Anyone have any questions of Erin? Any comments? Commissioner Heiburger?
This is a process that we've been working on for quite some time. The governor approved us doing a study with Crime and Justice Institute a few years back, and this was one of the recommendations, actually it fulfills at least two of the recommendations in that study that was paid for by the governor a few years ago to get pre-trial services up and going. And if you haven't read the report recently, just to refresh your memory again of what is in there as we move forward with trying to help reduce the bed days in our jail. So, some good information in the short form and the long form, it's also got a lot of additional stuff in it, so.
Okay.
And with that, I would make a motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion on a second. We have a couple of questions. Commissioner Barth, I think was first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I will say that this is a bit of an experiment, Commissioner Heiburger, and I'm hoping that it's successful. That said, if it doesn't prove out in saving us, we have to be prepared to end the program if it doesn't work. And I know that the state's attorney suggested that he could do that through his office on the condition that we hired a couple of more people, but this will be under your supervision, Erin, is this right, or?
Correct, to start.
Okay, and so again, I would just say that we, you know, it's a bold experiment, and I pray for its success, but after a couple of years, if it's not working, it's going to go away, in my opinion.
Commissioner Bender?
I mean, I think I'd just add on to that, that, you know, we need to be clear about what the goal is for this program, and as Commissioner Heiburger said, that, you know, the goal is to follow the recommendations that were made, and that the goal is to reduce bed days in the jail. I think that's going to be a difficult goal to monitor and accurately determine if that's, you know, been successful or not, but that is what we will be looking for from this program.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to approve the recruitment of two pre-trial coordinators. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Item E, Carrie, is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement for a health plan administrative service fee increase.
You might recall that we're a self-insured entity, so we operate our own health insurance plan, and we do that jointly with a couple of other entities. We have UMR, who's our third-party administrator, who helps process the claims and the explanation of benefits. We have Horizons, who helps coordinate our network, and we have AVARA in Stanford, who are, of course, providers in our network. We currently have three years agreements with all of those entities that will be ending at the end of this December. This is the time of year then that we go through when we talk about what kind of fee increases we can expect and whether or not we're all willing to commit to the process for additional timeframe, and I'm very pleased to let you know that all entities have agreed for another three-year contract period. As we looked at those fee increases, I think they're nominal and very appropriate. They're all close to that 3% for the care systems and for UMR, and Horizons is not applying a fee increase at all. So this morning, I'm before you, asking for your approval to have the commission chair assign three of those administrative agreements. The one from UMR doesn't come in, it comes in annually at the beginning of the year for the year in which it's effective, so we'll be seeing that closer to January of 2018.
Questions for Carrie this morning? No questions? Is there a motion? Or do you have a question?
I'll make a motion and a comment.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
To approve, I'm assuming. Commissioner Bender?
My comment is, is just that this has been a very successful program for the county. I mean, Carrie and her staff have done a great job overseeing this, and it's, I think, would be the envy of any private businessperson in town if they could see what our history has been with our health insurance premiums increase. The other thing that just caught me is Carrie's giving her report, I mean, these are very reasonable increases that we're looking at. I think most people would say that, particularly when you're looking in the world of health insurance, but then when you think about our cost of funds and what we've seen in our budget funding increases over the last few years, we'd be thrilled with 3%, so. But all that said, I think this has been a fantastic program, great benefit to the county's employees, and I'm happy to make the motion to approve it.
Thank you. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to approve the agreements. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no applications for abatement. Item seven are notices and requests. It's the first reading of ordinance MC 17-01 amending to 2002 revised zoning ordinance MC 30-02 for Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls to revise text pertaining to the title, purpose, and boundary of the joint jurisdiction. A second reading for consideration and final approval is September 26th at 6:00 PM at the joint Lincoln County, Minnehaha County, and City of Sioux Falls meeting. Mr. Schmidt's not here, I don't believe. Anyone have any questions? You'll have to contact Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Chairman, this is just a first reading.
Right.
I would make a motion to, or do we need to make a motion?
No.
Just set a date for the second.
This date is April, or it's April, September 26, 2017 at 6:00 PM.
Move forward, sir.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to set that date. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Would you verify that Mr. Schmidt will be here for that meeting, please? There is no planning and zoning notices, and item nine is a petition for compromise. Good morning.
Good morning, Melinda Storley, Commission Assistant. Before you is DPNO 35946, which represents poor relief in the amount of $10,076. The lien, the first entry for the lien was dated March 3, 1996, and the couple was divorced March 20, 1998, and on December 2001, the lien was paid in full. So we're addressing today fees dated from 2012 to 2013. The petitioner expressed in her narrative that she shouldn't be responsible for the lien because she has been divorced since December 1996. You'll notice that I have two different divorce dates. The December 1996 was the date that the divorce case went to court, and the date that she believes they were divorced, but the judge did not sign the divorce until March 20, 1998, and that's also when it was recorded. But that takes us back to the lien amounts. I did verify with Human Services regarding the fees from 2012 to 2013, and they do represent services that the ex-spouse received for medical bills.
Anyone have any questions for Melinda this morning? Commissioner Bender, I think was first.
It was a close tie, though.
Go ahead.
Melinda, I'm just curious what, I mean, this appears that it was a clerical mistake, and I'm curious if there's a process in place or how this kind of mistake happens.
I don't know. I asked the clerk of courts if there was any recording accompanying that the copy that had been signed, and she was, stated that there weren't any notations indicating why there was almost a 13-month delay on that.
No, I'm referring to the fact that it got reported, it got recorded on both the husband and the wife, when it appears that it happened after a divorce and it only went to the husband.
Unless you notify Human Services, I believe, unless you notify them that you have been divorced and produced paperwork, paperwork related to it, they won't even know that you've been divorced, and then it would still have to come through this process where the petitioner would then have to request to have her name removed, their name removed from the lien because of a divorce. There's a lot of them still sitting out there like this.
Hmm. Interesting. A question about the process, but anyway, go ahead.
No, that was my question, too. How come so many years later, after the divorce, her name's on this? So I guess the story is if you've received assistance from Human Services, and then this happens, you better let them know so that your name isn't put on a lien, so.
The same thing happens with bankruptcies unless they notify Human Services. They have no idea that it's occurred, so.
Interesting. Okay.
I guess my comment would be, which would be natural, there has to be a way to define that process so that maybe we can avoid all of this conversation and research and everybody's time if, in fact, that the system would normally file those with the department heads or whomever need to have that information, because we spend a lot of time on some of these that we could avoid, I think. That would be my only comment, is to try to find a better system.
Good morning, Commissioners Carol Muller, Commission Administrative Officer. We, you know, at Human Services, they went electronic four years ago, and by doing that, there's more of a process in place, and hopefully down the road, you're going to see that dramatically decrease for those.
If I might, is there a way for us to go back and notify individuals who were before the electronic process to let them know that they need to pursue that and filing?
Oh, you're probably talking about 70,000 people. And with people moving, there's probably 80% of those are bad addresses.
70,000 people?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Chair, I believe we're owed about $49 or $50 million, so.
No, I understand that part of it, but the numbers always stick out, but I had no clue that there were that many before electronic processing.
I can share with you, I've got to go back in my memory just a little bit, but when we switched over to electronic and Human Services, I think our case numbers were somewhere in the 80s at that particular time, getting closer to the 90,000 cases, and when we switched over, we made the decision with IT in order to help staff know if they're dealing with a case who's already been in the system before. Those went into six-digit numbers. We started at 100,000 and worked our way up, so that we have a good clarification as to where that's going, where that's going, and if they knew they needed to look back or not.
Sounds like job security for somebody. Holy smokes.
Move to approve the compromise.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the compromise. Is there any other comments? Is the petitioner here, and would they like to make any comments? No, thank you, Melinda.
Thank you very much. I was just going to clarify that that meant that we were removing the lien from the petitioner and leaving against the spouse.
Correct.
That's correct. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item, or nowhere to the opportunity for public comment, if anyone would like to make any public comments about any item that is not on the agenda, we would be happy to hear Don't see anybody coming forward. Item 10 is regular business. Consider a motion to approve and consume and blend alcohol beverage license for an event at Mary Jo Wagner Arboretum, 1900 Perry Place, Sioux Falls on September 21st. Olivia?
Yes, I believe Lori is here from the Mary Jo Wagner Arboretum, but essentially this is their donor and volunteer appreciation event. I believe you guys do it every year, but if you want to go.
Actually, this is the first time we've ever done this event. It is our 10-year anniversary. My name is Lori Kiso, and I'm the Director of the Mary Jo Wagner Arboretum, and we decided that after 10 years, we certainly need to appreciate our donors and our volunteers, and would like to host an open house.
I think we need your address, too, Lori.
1900 South Perry Place.
Super.
In Sioux Falls.
Yep. Does anyone have any questions for Lori?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the beverage license for September 21st. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Item 11 is the public hearing to receive comments or input on the 2018 Minnehaha County annual budget. Good morning, Carol, again.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Administrative Officer. On July 25, 2017, it was the last July in the month that you had a meeting, you adopted the provisional fiscal year 2018 budget. After its adoption, the provisional budget was published in the legal newspapers of Minnehaha County, which included today's hearing, which is underneath statute by the state of South Dakota, a requirement of counties to go through and hold the first Monday of the month, or the first Tuesday of the month, sorry, in August. The provisional budget for 2018 is at $128,418,833. For reference, that includes $46 million for the jail expansion project. If you minus that, because you want to compare apples to apples from years previous, that total would then be $82,418,833. The revenues reflect a 2.84% growth in property taxes due to new construction within the county and a 1% CPI adjustment allowed by the property tax limitations and statutes for total county property taxes collected. The budget is also supported by modest growth in non-property tax revenue such as the recording fees, vehicle registration fees, and alcohol tax distribution. The provisional budget includes seven new positions to begin January 2018. They also reflect the implementation of a 1.5% matrix adjustment, along with a step increases earned by employees, which is in accordance with the structure of the Minnehaha County Pay Plan. Two weeks ago, last week, two weeks ago, you sat through a budget hearing with the city of Sioux Falls on budgets for metro communications, Sulaan Heritage Museums, and the Sulaan Libraries. They were all approved at that time, and you are required to do those per the joint powers agreements, to go through and approve those together. Documents, you have two of them attached in front of you today that are summarizing changes for potential adjustments to the provisional budget. If these adjustments were all to move forward, the cash applied for the general fund would be $4.375 million, and the additional opt-out from 2016 that you passed at that time would be $1.4 million. These numbers are a decrease of $132,000 from the provisional budget. And for reference, there remains $600,000 of unused opt-out authority. Again, that was from the 2016 opt-out. We look forward to your direction and any questions you may have. As a reminder, September 19th, which is two weeks from today, there is no budget meeting, and the final budget will need to be approved the last, your last meeting of the month of September, which would be September 26th.
This is a public hearing. We've all been through this process, so I don't know that we would have questions at this point. Is there anyone in the audience who has comments about the budget or budget process? Good morning, Erin.
Erin McGowan, Minnehaha County State's Attorney. I want to begin by thanking you. This commission, so far, in the provisional budget, did approve making three grant positions full-time. It does not add to our staff, but it does make those full-time positions that were previously paid for with Department of Highway Safety money. I also want to thank you for what you did in response to MRC's law with the additional requirements of our office to provide notifications to victims. However, I do have concerns, and I am disappointed that our office is not getting any additional staff with what we are seeing with the crime in Sioux Falls. Right now, my office has over 16,300 open adult criminal cases. We've opened up well over 12,000 new adult criminal cases so far this year. We are currently 53% ahead in our caseloads of where we were four years ago. We are currently 16% ahead of where we were just last year with no anticipated new staff. We know for certain that our meth arrests are up 65% from last year. Just this morning, in going through my very large stack of felonies from the three-day weekend, I had a ag assault with a loaded 9mm, cocaine, meth. We've got rapes, child abuse, robberies, burglaries. We still have 12 homicides pending. We cannot continue as an office to absorb these types of increases without an increase in staff. I appreciate the courage of the commission to do a public safety opt-out, and you did that, but I'm asking that you would put some of those public safety opt-out dollars into prosecution so that we can hold these offenders accountable. When we are spread so thin, we start to have murderers walk, rapists walk, drug dealers walk. We cannot manage the current caseloads, and checking the numbers early this morning, I have attorneys with over 890 files assigned to them on their trial calendar right now. That is not sustainable. We cannot achieve justice, we cannot achieve public safety with those numbers. So I would encourage you to go back, consider giving our office some additional staff. Thank you. I'm open to any questions.
Anyone have any questions at this point, or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
You know, I certainly was amongst us when we chose not to add any staff earlier on in our budget hearings, but I would favor us doing that at this time. I think clearly, you know, I think we communicated to Erin, we wanted things to be done, you know, effectively, efficiently going forward and not to overburden the system with extra charges, but, you know, of the list that Erin was talking about just now, there's nothing for shoplifting or bouncing checks, or, you know, there's plenty of people who, when a check is bounced to them, you know, that's something that affects them strongly. I mean, do you want that person who abused you to get away scot-free, or do you want them to face some kind of court of law? I think that we've already seen the effects of overburdening Erin's department where staff has been lost due to overwork, perhaps, and I guess I would, we've got the money, the citizens have given us the option of spending it with the intent that they get value for those expenditures, and I think this expenditure for an additional staff in Erin's office is actually not only prudent, but is effective. So, I know we're not going to decide that necessarily today, but I favor it.
Correct. Any other comments or questions for Erin? This is a public hearing, as you know, Erin, and on the 26th, we'll make the decision to move forward or not, so we appreciate your coming.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anyone else like to make any comments, public comments about the budget? If not, we will go to item number 12, which is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County for the 2017 Burn Justice Assistance Grant. Did I butcher that again, Joe?
Got it right.
Hey. Award for Disparate Allocation. Mr. Bosman.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman with Sheriff's Office. Part of the grant agreement that we are joining into the city of Sioux Falls with is that we have a joint agreement signed, both by the city and the county, just kind of covering the requirements that show that there is a fiscal agent signed in this case, and this will be the city of Sioux Falls. They are the person that they manage all the funds, and then when we spend our share, which is 35% of the award, we then would bill the city and they reimburse us back. And then they take care of all the grant reporting requirements onto the federal government from there. So this kind of just lays out the percentages and the guidelines.
Does anyone have any questions for the lieutenant?
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the grant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Item 13 is to consider a motion to approve the establishment of a fund balance restricted for museum collection, storage facility within the building fund. Is Mr. Litz here? Kim, could you help us just briefly with that, please?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Commissioners. It was discussed in a building committee in mid-August that we should further restrict some funds that are currently in our building fund to be used for the museum collection, storage facility. And so this briefing memo is requesting a motion to establish that restricted fund within the building fund.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this morning. Does anyone have any questions? I think we're all very familiar with the fund and the project.
Make a motion to establish that fund.
Second.
A motion and a second to establish a restricted fund for the museum collections facility. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Kim. Item 14 is commission liaison reports. Any liaison reports since last week?
I have one.
Okay.
I met with DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent, and all of our projects are, for the most part, very well ahead of schedule. One is right on schedule, so still have, believe it or not, quite a bit of construction season left, including a bridge project that we hope to complete this year. And I'm trying to remember the exact location, but it escapes me at this time, so just FYI, things are alive and well and moving very, very well in the Highway Department.
Any other liaison reports? No. Any new business? Any old business? I don't believe we have an executive committee this morning, do we?
No, we don't, but if we can go back to old business just a minute.
Oh, you've gotta move faster.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, we're just looking for a little bit of direction in terms of the budget. Do you want us to schedule another hearing for next Tuesday? That would be your last opportunity to go through and do so, because you'd approve the budget two weeks later. Do you want us to create the budget with these changes in here for next week? That would be helpful for us.
Go ahead. With what changes?
The, the only thing that I would like to address, and I don't know that it has to be a budget hearing, I'm not quite sure how to address it, is that we had $300,000 set aside for public, for the pretrial services. We're only gonna use 50,000 this year. I would like to see us put a little bit of that money for pretrial services in next year, in case there is some, in case we start using more electronic monitoring and stuff. And I would ask, maybe our office looks to see what that budget number would be. It might only be 30, $40,000, I don't know, but we've already got 300,000 that we're not using that would just go back into general fund. I'm not sure whether, how that actually works. I didn't have a chance to talk to Kim. So whether that's something we just address at the end of the year, or if it's something that you want budgeted, 'cause we do have the money, I am not asking to move all of it. I'm just asking for portion.
And one way, as you suggested, we could address this is when we do our carryover supplements, which would occur in the first quarter of 2018.
Okay.
We could fine-tune the number and come up with a carryover supplement at that time.
I, sure. I'd be more comfortable with that, just because it might give us a few more months to see if that was even necessary. So I'd be more comfortable with that decision.
Well, I think we've approved the project, and I'm not sure if we know exactly till, what, October, November, what the carryover probably will be.
Exactly.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
That'll allow time for those positions to be filled and get the staff in place and see what the costs really are.
Okay, thank you.
At this point, I'm not sure that I have heard of any approved changes to the budget at all, and we can make those up until the 26th. I know that doesn't give you much time to publish that, but I don't think we need to have another meeting specifically to go through the budget one more time, unless somebody brings changes.
Okay. I think we would like to have a, the changes that you've brought forward already, the provisional budget, direction on that.
The ones that we talked about that were included in what we looked at today.
The numbers in your packet, yes. There were some adjustments. Can we, can we maybe bring those up? Right. We did factor in the amounts we received from the Department of Revenue for centrally-assessed utilities, the property tax on those. That generated another $55,000 of revenue in the general fund. The other big item was to budget revenue and expenditures for the airport security contract that was.
$194.
The backup one. There were revenue and expenditures associated with the airport security contract that was approved on August 1st. So that has been factored in, and the, the net change of all of these adjustments is to reduce the cash applied number to $4,375,000 from the $4,507 that it was preliminarily established in the provisional budget.
We don't have any problem with those changes.
No, I think we already approved those, so to speak, and have gone, maybe not officially, but we've gone through every one of them.
You have taken action in previous commission meetings to approve contracts.
All those have been confirmed, if you will.
Right.
Sorry, I didn't know we needed another process. Any other concerns? Otherwise, what's been presented to this point is a number that I think we're all comfortable with. Anybody have any comments? It's still, however, could change on the 26th, potentially. Correct? Okay. Then we're good to go with what was presented. Do we need action on that? I don't believe so, do we?
Okay, no.
Okay. You're shaking your head, no, right? I don't think so either.
I'll just bring forward the final numbers.
Correct.
On the 26th.
Yep. Good.
Move adjournment.
You're a hero.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.